All right, I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. It is Monday, August 23rd of 2021, and it is 6:30 PM. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Loeb?
Present.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Pack?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
You're on mute, Tom.
I'm here. Sorry.
Commissioner Schrodell?
We will see him later, okay?
Okay, and Commissioner Wilson just sent me an email, so I am going to resend him the link real quick. And Commissioner Stevens?
Here. Do you need to call?
Commissioner Pascoe is absent.
Okay, thank you, Darcy, very much. All right, I, oh, do we have any attendees, Darcy, in case we have public comment?
We do.
Oh, we have seven, all right. So, right now is public comment, and this is an opportunity for attendees to provide comment on an issue of concern to the Planning Commission, unless that item is on the agenda for public hearing. Public hearing items, if any, will include an opportunity for public testimony, which will be announced later in the agenda. So if any of our attendees would like to make a comment before we begin our hearing, please use your raise hand feature, and if you're on telephone, I believe it's *9. Do we have any, Darcy, hands raised?
I have Ellen Burns, and for the record, we now have Commissioner Schrodell and Commissioner Wilson.
Wonderful, thank you, Darcy. Hi, Ellen, you're on, you're unmuted. What would you like to talk to us about?
I, I'm very interested in how the county is going to move forward, considering the provisions of Senate Bill 8 and House Bill 2008 in the last legislative session that had to do with the, the building of low-income housing on lands not zoned for residential, looking at primarily church properties, that's what I'm interested in. And I wondered if they, that that aspect was incorporated into this land-use housing strategies.
Karen, is that, are you best, or Martha, who, oh, Martha, would you like to answer?
Yes, that is a very good question, thank you. So it's, it's a bit of a complicated answer. Senate Bill 8 and House Bill 2008 and a few other pieces of legislation from this year's session are, to the extent possible, being incorporated in the various components of the land-use housing project. For the most part, the, the strategies that we're talking about in today's hearing do not incorporate those, with the exception of the Affordable Housing Bonus that we're going to be talking about. We did look at what our proposal was as compared to what was approved under Senate Bill 8, and it's consistent with, and in some cases, more generous maybe even than what is going to be required under Senate Bill 8. The rest of the provisions under both of those pieces of legislation are certainly going to be considered as we are moving forward, and at least at this point, we just want to make sure we're not doing anything inconsistent with them. I'm not entirely sure what other specific code changes will be required to implement those, so we are, we are looking into that.
And Martha, Ellen asked about church properties.
Yes.
Is there any?
Oh. So Senate Bill 8 allows for some provision of affordable housing on properties that are owned by religious corporations, but it also talks about property that is commercially zoned, which is something that we are going to be talking about today, which is why I, I've said that what we're proposing is not inconsistent with Senate Bill 8. And then House Bill 2008, I believe, also has to do with church-owned properties or properties owned by religious institutions and affordable housing. And that's, that's something we are, we are going to have to consider as we continue to make changes through the Land Use Housing Strategies Project. So we are aware of all of these things. We're, we're fitting it in where we can. Or where it makes the most sense.
Ellen, does that answer well your question to the best that Martha can at this point?
Yes, at this point, thank, thank you very much, Martha. I'm, I'm sure we'll be continuing to have conversation as, as the plans develop and and the county looks at this more closely and, and churches begin to look at what their options may be. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Ellen, appreciate your input. I don't see any other hands raised, do you, Darcy, from our attendees? Okay, all right.
I do not.
Pardon? No, okay.
I do not see any more hands.
Okay, very good. Well, then I think we're going to move forward with our public hearing, so please bear with me, I have a couple pages to read. "The public hearing is now open for the consideration of ZDO 277 Housing Strategies and a Legislative Proposal to Amend the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance. Assisting us in the hearing today are several members of the county staff: Principal Planner Martha Fritzi, Long Range Planning Manager Karen Beirid, and Administrative Assistant Darcy Renhart. This public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission and county staff, have both audio and video capability. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see the panel's name on their screen but will be able to hear them when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision on this matter. The Board will conduct a hearing on this application on October 6, 2021, at 9:30 AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10:00 PM. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If the, if an announcement of additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice of that additional hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows: One, Planning and Zoning Division Staff Report; Two, Entry into the Record of Any Additional Correspondence Received; Three, Technical Information from Other Government Agencies; Four, Testimony by Representatives of Recognized Community Planning Organizations or Hamlets (Maximum Length: 10 Minutes Per CPO or Hamlet); Five, Testimony from Any Other Person (Maximum Length: 3 Minutes Per Speaker or More As Determined by the Chair); Six, Closing of the Public Hearing; and Seven, Planning Commission Discussion and Action. Oh, no, 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 Wilson. There is a designated time during the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The Chair will make clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. Attendees on PC and iPad, you have a Raise Hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom depending on the device. Attendees by telephone use *9 to activate the Raise Hand feature. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the one who is speaking. Staff will call upon you when it is time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please state your name and where you are from or who you are representing when you begin. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will return to normal. The Planning and Zoning Division Staff will now present their staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners.
Okay.
No, go ahead, I'm going to share my screen while you start.
Okay, yeah, sure, no, I thought I would just kind of kick off because I just wanted to welcome you this evening, and I am just going to give a really brief introduction and then be able to pass it over to Martha. As Commissioner Stevens noted, is that the Planning Commission was providing an overview of this entire project back in July, we've actually had a couple of different touchpoints, but as a quick reminder, and, and as was stated in the background of your packet, this Land Use Housing Strategies Project actually is a compilation of many different things. This is a project that we've been working on over the past year, and it's, it is founded in the Housing Needs Analysis that was done between 2017 and 2019. That Housing Needs Analysis really identified a goal for housing units that we needed over the next 20 years, and it identified that we needed as many as 5,000 new dwelling units in the urban unincorporated area. Many of the strategies that are identified in the Land Use Housing Strategies Project came out of the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force work, and they were specific recommendations from that task force. There are also the, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Performance Clackamas identified a goal with respect to being able to identify space and places, look at our zoning and provide places for 700 new, where 700 new affordable units could potentially be developed, and those are for households with an, an income of 60% to 110% of the area's county median. And then finally, there are a couple of Senate Bills that were passed, House Bill 2001 as well as House Bill 1051, they provided a direction for some of, in the overall Land Use Housing Strategies Project, as well as information collected in the Long Range Planning Work Program. So that's a really high level for our entire Land Use Housing Strategies Project. Tonight, we are only talking about three of those strategies. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Martha, and she will provide a background and information and the staff report on this project. So, go right ahead, Martha.
Thank you, Karen. As Karen mentioned, tonight we are talking about three specific strategies, and the specific proposal includes a legislative text amendment to the zoning and development ordinance and to, as well as to the comprehensive plan. The amendments were included in your packet and include amendments to Sections 510, which, Section 510 includes our urban commercial and mixed-use districts, some changes to Section 1012, which talks about our density standards, and then 10, Section 1015, which deals with parking and loading. It includes also some enabling, I call them enabling amendments, to Chapter 5 and Chapter 6 of our comprehensive plan. And again, all of the proposed amendments were included in your packet. The amendments collectively are intended to do these three things. We talk about three strategies. Well, these are the three strategies that we really focused on in Phase 1 of our housing work, to increase the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, to look at multifamily parking requirements and understand really what, what is the right size, what the parking requirements should be and how maybe they should be changed to be a little bit more flexible to accommodate different types of development, and also looking at increasingly allowed housing density in certain commercial zones. And I'm going to talk briefly about each of these and about the specific changes to our zoning code, but I know we have talked about these in a lot of detail in recent past, so I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. I'm happy to answer questions at the end if we need to go back and talk in more detail, excuse me, detail. So a few things to keep in mind as we are thinking through this package of proposed text amendments and, and through the housing strategy, or Land Use Housing Strategies Project in general, not, no single strategy is going to solve the county's housing supply and affordability problem. Really what we are trying to do is look at lots of different changes that we can make to our zoning code that would affect, would effectively start moving the needle a little bit at a time to help solve some of these problems. So I'm just going to start right off with staff's recommendation. Staff is recommending approval of all of the proposed text amendments that are found in the attachments in your packet. Another thing to keep in mind as we are moving forward, as we are thinking about these amendments, we are talking about three strategies, we are talking about several different sections of text amendments. Each of these strategies really is independent of the others. They work together, but, but at the end of the day, the Planning Commission could recommend to the Board approval of all of these amendments, some of these amendments, or none of these amendments, or all of these amendments with some other, some additional changes. And so keep in mind that it's not an all or nothing. If for some reason the Planning Commission doesn't really want to work with or make any changes to parking ratios, it doesn't mean you can't do the other things. And so I just wanted to kind of put that up front as we're thinking through all of this because we tend to talk about all of it as one piece. So, we have seen this map before. These are the areas that would be affected by changing the Affordable Housing Bonus and parking requirements for multifamily housing. These are areas in the urban unincorporated Clackamas County area that allow multifamily housing, and so I always like to start with sort of a visual of what, what specific areas we're talking about that would be affected. And if you recall, the Affordable Density, the Affordable Housing Density Bonus is really an optional program that a developer can use, and it, what it does is allows for a few more units to be built on a property than would otherwise have been allowed if the developer agrees to build affordable units. And by affordable units, I mean units that are available for low-income households, moderate to low-income households sometimes. In this case, what we are talking about are households that are making 80% of the area's median income or lower, but that is a choice, that's what the proposal is currently. The way our zoning code reads, it doesn't actually specify a number, but it does, it just talks about affordable based on HUD standards, and the current bonus that we have right now is not very effective. What it allows for is up to 8% of the base density that would have been allowed if the developer agrees to build at least eight affordable housing units, and that's what's shown here on the left. So if somebody, if, if the site could accommodate based on whatever zoning it's in and whatever maximum densities are allowed in that zone, if a site could accommodate 100 units, the developer agrees to provide eight, at least eight affordable units, then the developer is allowed to build eight more for a total of 108 units. It's not very much of an incentive, and so after talking with developers and talking with, and reviewing what other jurisdictions do and looking at different ways to develop or to, to create an Affordable Housing Density Bonus, the proposal we ended up with, excuse me, is to keep it simple and simply raise the maximum to a maximum of 50% instead of 8%. So in other words, if that same developer came in on that same site and could build 100 units, they agree to provide at least 50 of those affordable to lower-income households, then they would be allowed to build another 50 units, assuming of course they could meet all of the other development standards that are required, including parking and landscaping and setbacks and all of those other development standards. This does not change anything about any of the other development standards. So specifically, these amendments are found in Section 1012, and that section, that's the density section, and specifically in Table 1012-1, the amendments increase the maximum, like I mentioned, from 8% to 50% for any zoning districts that allow plexes, oh, not of, or multifamily housing. And I say with exceptions, there are a few exceptions, it's not every single zone in the urban unincorporated area that allows that. There are some zones that specifically have a maximum outlined in our comprehensive plan, those are the zones in the Sunnyside Village, those would be excluded from this, they currently are, they will continue to be. There is one zoning district, the special high density, that actually would be added in to the Affordable Housing Bonus. Currently, it can't have one, but it, to us, doesn't make any sense, there's really only one site in the urban area that's zoned special high density, and so they also have been added into this Affordable Housing Bonus. The amendments specify that these units need to be affordable to households at or below, earning at or below 80% of the area's median income, and that the units need to be held affordable to households at that income level for a minimum of 30 years through a restrictive covenant or some similar documentation. And I know, woo, sorry, and I know, as, I was trying to scroll down a little bit so I could see what I wrote there. When we had this conversation before, I know we spent a little bit of time talking about how affordability is maintained through this mechanism, and I actually spent a little bit of time doing research about maintaining affordability and mechanisms both for rent and for, for sale products. And I think the short version of what I found out generally is that there are, there are structures in place now in the market to do this, and our job with the zoning code is to, to enable it and make it so the market will want to build housing that's more affordable. When it comes to for-rent housing, building housing for, especially for low to very low-income households is, is difficult. There are a lot of different financing mechanisms and gap financing that have to happen. Generally, it's done through a combination of low-income housing tax credits and some other sources, all of which have very strict requirements to maintain affordability, usually for 30 years, some of them are even longer, and they have reporting requirements tied into that. When it comes to for-sale product, it's a little bit different, but it can be done, at least there's two common ways of doing it, one is through deed restrictions, and you know, a deed, a deed restriction or covenant runs with the land, it's, it's, it's a, it binds current and future homeowners to whatever is, is indicated in that deed restriction, and in this case, it could be restrictions on resale and, you know, describing a formula for basically, you know, a ceiling for subsequent sales of the home, it could be restrictions on who, what affordability level or what income level, excuse me, the buyers could have, you know, and this is something that's discovered during a title search, and it's in largely self-enforcing because it goes with the sale of the property. There's another way to do it, which involves nonprofits setting up community land trusts, it's generally a mechanism where a, a home is built and somebody buys the home, but they're leasing the land, and there's a shared equity agreements, and those are also taken care of through the community land trust. So in writing, in, in making these changes, what we are doing is enabling some of these other mechanisms in the market to work and to hopefully take advantage of this increased allowance to help make expensive, to make expensive development pencil, and so they can provide it at a more affordable rates. And so moving on to parking, I mentioned, you know, when you're building multifamily housing, you do have to meet a lot, well, in any, any sort of development, you have to meet certain development standards, and one of them obviously is parking. Currently, if you are to build multifamily housing in the unincorporated county area, there is one parking ratio that you could, that you have to use, and you need to provide a minimum of one and a quarter to one and three-quarters spaces per unit, depending on how many bedrooms. There's currently no structure in the zoning code to allow for any reductions or for any reason. And so what we are proposing to do is not only reduce just the general parking ratio by a little bit to between one and one and a half spaces per unit, but also to allow for a lower parking ratio if a developer were to come in and build affordable units or to build any sorts of units in very close proximity to light rail. There's a couple of reasons for this. One is that we looked at a lot of data, and really based on data and based on observed parking lot usage, there really is a lower need for off-street parking for certain populations, specifically lower income, and also for housing development in close proximity to light rail or other major public transit. And so we are trying to allow for that in our zoning code in those situations, and so these changes are found in Section 1015. Again, it's reducing the required minimum parking for all multifamily units to one to one and a half spaces per unit based on bedrooms, add clarifying that a studio or one-bedroom unit has the same parking ratio, excuse me, a studio or no-bedroom unit has the same parking ratio as a one-bedroom because that is not currently addressed in our zoning code at all. And then the additional reductions for units that are affordable at or below 60% of area median income and/or units that are within a quarter-mile walking distance of a light rail station. It specifically says, you know, walking distance via public road, walkway, or accessway, this is not as the crow flies, the intent is that people actually can get to the light rail station, it's not just a, a buffer. And in no case should any combination of these reductions exceed 40% overall. And again, this reduction is based on actual data that we have found through the course of our research and also what other jurisdictions in the area do. And so the final, the final strategy that we're talking about today deals with a smaller subset of land than the, the first two strategies deal with, and this has to do with allowing more housing to be built in certain commercial areas, and I say certain commercial areas, it's really four commercial zoning districts, it's general commercial, community commercial, retail commercial, and what is the last one, off the top of my head? I will, I'll come to it in a second. These are the zoning districts that currently allow housing. They allow multifamily housing to be developed, but the density is tied directly to the, a different residential zone, the high-density residential zone, which has a maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre. And if you remember from our previous conversations about this, I mean, 25 dwelling units an acre is not super-high density, and it's with the, with the expense to build housing and costs going up, it's really, it's really becoming very hard for developers to make that 25 units an acre pencil for them financially unless the units are very, very expensive. And so what we are looking at is a change essentially from this type of development, this is developed at about 25 units an acre, that what it would look like, to something that looks more or could look more like one of these options over here, the lower one being a housing development that's close to the Fuller Road Station, that's 40, 46-ish dwelling units an acre, and then this one up here that actually is more than 60 dwelling units an acre, but it's just an example of what sort of a mixed-use, a little bit higher-density development could look like. And so that's what this proposed amendment could enable, is more developments like this in these commercial areas versus something like this, which is more of like a three-story walkout. So these amendments are found in, well, the amendments related to this are found in a couple of sections, specifically Section 510, the urban commercial zones, Table 510, it's sort of an awkward structure, but it's, it's found in, the changes are found in the footnote originally, it linked, like I said, to the high-density residential standards, we're removing that link only for the density and, and adding it to the density table that's found in this section. All of the other developments- All of the other development standards for multifamily housing um, that are found through the high-density residential zone would still apply um, for multifamily housing developed in commercial zones. And so section five-ten would set the maximum housing density in these commercial zones at sixty dwelling units an acre. Um, also would set a minimum density of twenty units an acre. Um, and then it also specifies that the density bonuses in section ten-twelve would apply, and those include those affordable housing density bonuses that we talked about. But we also added um, a new density bonus of twenty percent for house, only in these commercial zones for housing that would be developed in a mixed-use building. And that addition is, is somewhat in response to some concerns about putting more housing in commercial zones and the effect it might have on commercial businesses. And it's also really to incentivize mixed-use development, like that top picture um, in the previous slide that has commercial on the ground floor and housing up above, in, in effort to start trying to create a little bit more um, walkable cohesive community in some of these areas. Um, and so the intent really is to incentivize the, the mixed-use development. Um, and I think it's important to note also that with these changes, nothing about any commercial uses that are allowed now would change. Um, and you know, housing is not required to be built, mixed use is not required to be built. If somebody wanted to come in and build office or retail or restaurants, they could still certainly do that in these zones. And so the amendments to the comprehensive plan, I said they're sort of um, enabling amendments. I guess that's in my mind how I look at them. They're pretty minimal. Um, chapter five is our transportation system plan. It deals, um, it, it has some language about parking and allowed um, parking reductions. And we've specifically added the affordable housing and the proximity to light rail in there um, as an, as allowed parking reductions. And then chapter six is our housing chapter. Um, and it talks about housing bonuses. And again, we just sort of consolidated a couple of different um, uh, areas where housing bonuses are discussed into one and just talks about um, different uh, different situations in which housing bonuses could uh, be provided. And I just want to also throw out there that we are aware that chapter six is very outdated. If you actually read it from front to back, it's very strange. Because there's, there's very old information in there, especially in the introduction. That isn't the, fixing that is not the intent of this portion of the project. That's something we're going to tackle with the next phase of the land use housing strategy. So right now, we really just want to make sure that the affordable housing bonus references in chapter six are consistent with what, with what changes we're making in the zoning code. And then finally, um, when we are making text amendments or any sorts of amendments to our codes, we have to look at consistency with all the applicable um, standards. And in this case, it would be with a number of the statewide planning goals, with Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan and their regional, their Regional Transportation Functional Plan. And then, of course, with the counties, um, the county's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. And the findings are provided in some detail in the staff report. Um, just to very briefly highlight them. Um, goals, one, two, nine, ten, and eleven of the statewide planning goals were looked at. And this proposal was found consistent with them, specifically with goal ten, which is housing. Um, you know, the intent of which is to, is to ensure that jurisdictions um, are able to provide a, a variety of types and prices of housing. And we think that the, the proposed amendments um, really will uh, further that goal. And then goal twelve, which deals with transportation, the transportation planning rule specifically requires that, uh, that when you are making changes to your zoning code, um, that you be able to make a finding that the proposal um, would not have a significant effect on the transportation system. And so exhibit three um, in the packet, it's actually the very last sort of pages, includes a brief analysis that was done um, by traffic and, a traffic engineer in the county's uh, transportation engineering division, which looks specifically at um, potential impacts of trip generation that could occur from the, from the increased housing densities. Um, and it's, and the analysis found that in the four commercial zones that we were talking about, the general commercial um, community, commercial, office, commercial, and retail zones, that even though increasing, if, in- increasing allowed housing in those areas would increase trip generation. I mean, that's kind of logical because you have more houses and more people. It wouldn't increase it to a level that would exceed other um, traffic generation from other commercial uses that are typically built in those, in those zones. So in other words, um, it really isn't creating more traffic than if somebody came in and developed a restaurant or just retail um, on these, um, on these sites. And so that analysis, like I said, is founded in, in exhibit three at the very end of your packet. Um, and uses really very conservative assumptions for the commercial uses to, um, that that the increased residential uses are compared to. And so um, the conclusion of, of that is, is that this proposal complies with goal twelve and does not, would not cause a um, signi- significant effect on the transportation system. And then finally, Metro, um, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plans and Regional Transportation Functional Plans contain um, regulations for the, you know, for the urban unincorporated areas within Metro. Um, the transportation functional plan does require um, uh, parking, some sort of uh, do- does require that a jurisdiction have, have a parking plan. Um, but it doesn't, it's, it sets a not to exceed number. And so you cannot require more than a certain number of parking spaces, but it doesn't say anything about reducing the number of parking spaces that you're providing. Um, and similarly with housing, um, it does talk about situations in which you could reduce housing capacity, but doesn't really address increasing housing capacity, which is what we're doing here. And then finally, the county plan and, and um, ZDO criteria that we look to are largely procedural. Um, all of the procedure, all, all of the required procedures have been followed um, in this instance, including the proper noticing and um, allowing for public participation. And there's more information about that in the staff report as well as um, in the exhibits, and exhibit one is all of the notices that were sent out. And so I'm going to stop talking now. That's it. Um, if anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer them for you. And I think I'm going to stop sharing unless somebody really feels that I need to go back to any of these slides.
Are there any questions for staff from the commission? And before we take their first raised hand, um, I just really want to thank you, Martha and team. Um, all the kind of notes that I had made about questions that the various planning commissioners had. You clearly researched and provided those answers. I really appreciate that a lot. So thank you. Um, if you have a question, commissioners, uh, please use the raised hand and we'll get those answered. We have, uh, Murph.
I, I have a outside-the-ballpark question. Uh, back during the analysis, it came up that one of the reasons why we had a shortage of affordable housing was that we did not have enough of expensive housing, so to speak. That it was being bought up by people in higher uh, pay categories uh, due to the fact that there was a shortage in, of their market. And so lower incomes were uh, being shorted due to the purchases taking place of the, by the uh, higher income people. And I have never heard anything since that analysis uh, on how we're, how would we address this other than creating more uh, affordable housing? Um, so is, I was wondering if there is a restriction of some sort uh, that will go in place, that will uh, protect this housing from being bought up by uh, somebody that wants to monopolize or something uh, of, of this. I mean, I, I know that's business, but I was just curious if this was going to be something that uh, could be protected for strictly low-income families.
So some of it, yes. Um, it's not done through our zoning code. Uh, but if somebody is using the affordable housing bonus, then that housing is restricted. Um, there are parameters i- as far as how much um, a household can earn in order to qualify to either rent or to buy the housing. Um, that's, that's something that, um, while there are a lot of mechanisms out in the market, certainly they're not always used. Um, if they, if, if a developer comes in and doesn't use any of those mechanisms, then there really isn't any way to stop somebody from basically buying down at the market. Um, which, which is what is, is what happens sometimes, certainly.
Thanks, Martha. And we have a question from Michael.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Tammy. Uh, Martha, as I recall, you said that we were looking for five thousand additional housing units at the beginning of your presentation. Of these three strategies that you put forward here, what is the estimated um, amount of housing uh, directed at that five thousand that each of these three strategies would um, taken, uh, taken to effect? Such as, let's say, the increasing the density bonus for affordable housing. How much of that five thousand would that particular proposal accomplish? And likely, the second one and the third one. What are we looking at for each of those proposals addressing the five thousand?
Um, so that's a good question, and I can get partly there, uh, because it's, it's, it's not, it's hard to do an analysis with make, without making a whole lot of guess-type assumptions when you're talking about exactly how many more units, reducing the parking ratio by a very little bit would um, would produce. Uh, but I can tell you that we, we did an analysis based on the uh, the billable lands inventory that Metro has in our commercial zones. And we looked at if um, housing were built at the current twenty-five dwelling units an acre versus we looked at both forty-five and sixty dwelling units an acre. I'm looking at my cheat sheet here because I don't have all of this off the top of my head. But um, so what we found is that by increasing it up to sixty dwelling units in the acre, it, it could accommodate as many as eight hundred additional housing units over what could be built right now. Um, and that's really the best that we could get at for that type of analysis, because there are so many other factors that go into really what is actually going to be built. Um, I can say that that five thousand number um, is, was looking only at the demand and the available residential lands. And so what it didn't even take into account is housing that could now be bu- built in commercial areas. Um, and so if we look at it just as the sixty, not even the sixty above what could be built now, we're looking at almost thirteen hundred units that could be built. And so I think that it could have a pretty significant effect and help um, get us toward that goal of finding places for as many as five thousand more dwelling units. But it's really hard to specifically pinpoint it. And I don't know if anyone else has anything to add to that. Um, I guess, you know, before we go too much farther, uh, we also have Joy Fields, who's a senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Division, who's been doing a lot of work um, on this project. And Ellen Rogalyn is listening in. She's a public and government, but government, government affairs staff person. Um, they, they may have more to add, too.
So, so Martha, the reason for my question was, I, I wanted to understand uh, which of these three strategies uh, would make the, the, the biggest impact on the five thousand? Um, you know, would it be the increasing the maximum allowed density in the commercial zones? Or, or which one uh, would do the most?
So, um, this is Karen, and so I was just going to throw in, because I don't know if Martha said this or not. So with respect to increasing um, the density bonus, the affordable housing density bonus, um, it was very difficult for us to calculate um, and make a projection on the new units because that's not a provision that many people use now. So, um, it was hard for us to look back and make some assumptions. So in that um, uh, in that bundle of new units, that really was, the focus of that really was the um, increasing the density from twenty-five to sixty, but it is not the affordable housing density bonus. And we don't necessarily have, and, and Joy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, we don't have an estimate for the affordable housing um, bonus. And that's mostly because in our county, that provision of, you know, just eight percent um, hasn't gotten us anything. Um, so it really will, um, just, what we're trying to do is align it, uh, uh, align the ability to um, make projects pencil with that particular one. Um, with, with respect to the parking and changing the parking standards, um, Martha or Joy, I think you, you guys did an analysis of how many additional units um, could be gotten because of that reduction. Um, and it was like an additional unit. It, it had to do with like square footage, right?
Yeah, it had to do more, well, yes, um, it, it, it has to do more with enabling higher density, to be honest. Because even if we allow up to sixty dwelling units an acre in commercial zones, it may be hard to realize that amount if we don't allow for less parking. Otherwise, a developer would get themselves into a situation where they have to provide structure parking, which is expensive, which it results in expensive units. It may not make, um, it may not make the development pencil at all. And so, so really, the parking and the density do go hand in hand to some extent. Um, and so, yes, reducing parking, um, I can try to find the numbers, but it's not as clean as just looking at like a strict density calculation. And quite frankly, personally, I think the increasing of the density in commercial areas will make the biggest difference. Um, but I just am a little concerned that it won't be realized without also doing the parking at the same, or reducing, allowing for some reduced parking at the same time.
Okay, I, I fully understand. This is a very complex uh, issue. Uh, what has been, have you had the opportunity to check with adjacent um, counties as to their approach to this? And, and how have they uh, addressed these three particular proposals that you have here? And do you have any statistics on what they have accomplished?
So as part of this project, early on, we did look at what other jurisdictions are, are doing and what their parking ratios are, for example, and how um, they address different parking ratios potentially for affordable housing. And I can tell you a number of other jurisdictions do. Um, there are a number of other jurisdictions, not Portland um, included, but sort of more suburban jurisdictions like ours, um, that have lower parking ratios for multifamily housing. Some of them have the same because it's the maximum that Metro allows. But nearly all of them allow for some sort of reduction for, specifically for affordable housing. And there's really no information that we could find out there where somebody had a number and then changed it and could look really specifically at what effect that change had. It's something that we could try to potentially, you know, track or try to keep an eye on if we make these changes moving forward. But we were not able to find any data that specific. Um, so we're just relying on this idea that other jurisdictions are doing it this way and it seemingly is working for them.
Thank you, Michael, very much for your questions. I believe Kevin has a question.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. So good work on this, Martha and team. We touched on earlier with Murph's question about the people of the low income moving in. Is that if, let's say, somebody rents that at the low income level and then they get a better job and move up? Is that, who, who manages that? Is that in housing that would predict their management on that? Because I'm a little, I'm working on the oversight of that. And then on the, the parking aspect of it, I still, I still have a lot of issues. And I'm, I'm hearing a lot more concerns that these are all, you know, based on assumptions. And we're not sure, even if we did all these things, if it would make a difference. I still have great concerns there. But as that first question of who, who would manage that of looking at the people's incomes? Because I'm, I'm a lot concerned if somebody in the government is monitoring how much somebody makes and then will trigger it. So I want to clarity on that.
No, absolutely not. And so if it is rental housing, it would be the management company. And so if a management company or developer and/or management company has housing that they need, that is affordable to households of certain income, then it is their job to make sure that that's who they're renting to. And so if it's for sale housing, it's a little bit different. That gets to those deed restrictions or community land trust mechanisms that I was talking about. And so they really have to deal with how, how much you could sell a house for in the future. If you're buying it below market, you're sort of agreeing to sell it below market. You do recognize some equity, but maybe not as much equity as somebody else would have. But then again, you were able to buy it below market. And so there are these mechanisms through either the developments or the developers and management companies, the nonprofit running a community land trust or just simply through the deed restriction that shows up when you buy a house or when you buy and sell a house.
That's what I was looking for, to make sure that government is not involved in this city because that's a huge problem. So, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Kevin. Murph, you have a question?
Of course, thank you very much, Chair Stevens. I, are any of these bonuses or the parking reductions transferable? If a developer has multi-projects going, will he be able to shift these bonuses from one project to another? One may make more money if he does that, if you understand what I'm talking about. And I, I know this is, this is pretty much new ground that we're stepping into. We've seen mobility change with the pandemic, that we now have internet access. We don't have to drive so much. So this parking idea is a great idea, but we really don't have modeling to work with, I would imagine, to see really how this works. So this is, some very serious questions have to be answered. And if we get it wrong, it's going to be wrong, it's going to be a tough one. But anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, there is a lot in there, Murph. I'll do my best to address it all. No, it's great. So first of all, the way that the amendments are structured, it would not include transfer of density bonuses or parking reductions to different sites. It is development-specific. I mean, unless somebody's developing across multiple adjacent sites, we would consider that as one development, but not disconnected sites. And I can appreciate your comment about new ground we're stepping into. I kind of feel like it's new ground we're stepping into for Clackamas County, but it's not, we're not recreating the wheel here. We're, we're not doing anything particularly groundbreaking sort of in the whole scheme of the Portland metropolitan area or even the state. There's a lot of other jurisdictions that have already stepped into, to this ground, so to speak, which is why we really look to other jurisdictions to see what they do so we can figure out the best model for us, rather than try to just create something from scratch. And so, so we do look to other jurisdictions to try to learn from what they have done. And we call them and talk to them and ask them for lessons learned and, and what's working and what's not working for them. It's not particularly data-driven, which as a data person drives me a little nutty sometimes, too. But I think there's some value in having those conversations with other staff and other planners and asking them specifically, you know, hey, is this working for you? Or is this, what, what would your advice be to us, or is this not working for you? And those kinds of questions. And that's all I wrote down. I feel like I missed something, though, Murph.
No, that's okay, you covered it.
Okay.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you so much, Murph. I see Carrie has a question.
I'm having difficulty with my mute button. So I, I actually like the simplicity associated with the parking, you know, not having all these different grading parking requirements for how many houses, you know, units you have and so on. So being a simple person, I like that simple formula. So I appreciate that. And I do think the staff did a wonderful job of pulling everything together. I'm just wondering, based on a lot of questions that the commissioners are asking, if there is a set of metrics that we can kind of apply to, to the changes that we're proposing? And whether there is an opportunity to come back, you know, five, six, seven years from now and just kind of look at whether we're achieving what our intended objectives are with the changes that we're making? And that way, it gives us a little bit of an opportunity to go back and learn from what we're doing. And I think it is great to talk to other, you know, agencies that have weighed into this area. But because Clackamas County is, we're all unique. So I'm just wondering if we can just take our own experience and, and do a look back to make sure that we're not just blindly forging through with the changes that we're making. So kind of not necessarily a sunset on the changes, but rather just a dedicated time in, in space where we go back and look at, are we achieving what we said we would? And try to, you know, make adjustments that way and kind of build into the code a this forced look back period. So that is just a, it's a suggestion for trying to address some of the concerns that a lot of folks are mentioning, so.
Thank you, Carrie, very much. Are there any other questions for the commissioners at this time? Okay, we're going to launch a forward with, have we received any correspondence on this matter other than those items included in the meeting packet? I do believe Darcy sent out two items. One was the presentation to PowerPoint that Martha shared. And then I also believe there was an email to Martha from a Carol Brinson. I would just want to make sure that everyone, did you all receive that email? You did, and I'm seeing nodding heads, good.
Chair, I did receive the, the communication, but for whatever reason, my Adobe was not working. So I couldn't actually read it. So I don't know, Darcy, is there a way you can send? Actually, I'm going to try it on my iPad right now, never mind.
Okay, again, one was the presentation that Martha just shared. So you didn't miss that, but the other was a, a very nice email. So you would want to read that. Okay, Darcy or Martha, were there any additional materials that we?
No, that's it.
Okay, very, very good. Well, that means we can move along. Are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to this proposal? Please use the raise hand feature if you are in the audience and wish to testify on behalf of a government agency. Darcy, is there anyone that you see raising their hand in the attendee column?
No, there is not.
Very good, thank you, Darcy, so much. Okay, we don't need questions, all right. We will move along here. Are there any representatives of community planning organizations or hamlets here to speak? Each organization will have 10 minutes to testify. Please use the raised hand feature if you are in the audience and wish to testify on behalf of a CPO or hamlet. Do you see any hands, Darcy?
No, I do not.
Okay, wow, all right, let's move along to all others. Does any other person wish to speak on this proposal? You will be allowed, well, three minutes or at the discretion of the chair. Oh, and here we go, I think we have some hands, so.
Okay, I have Cassie Wilson, who will be followed by Roseanne Johnson, and then Tyler King, and then John Seeling.
Excellent, thank you very much, Darcy. So Cassie, as soon as you come on, if you'll unmute, we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, Chair Stevens and Commissioners. My name is Cassie Wilson and I live in Boring. I wanted to come speak in support of these proposed amendments. As a disabled 23-year-old, when I envision the future of Clackamas County, the world I want to see in my lifetime and for younger generations, I picture living in an age-friendly, livable, walkable, complete neighborhood. Also, so sorry if you can hear my family in the background. I imagine being able to live near frequent transit service and safe streets and sidewalks. I imagine more parks instead of parking lots. I imagine more housing options being available and affordable so my generation doesn't have to split rent among three or more roommates. For me, these zoning amendments strongly tie to transportation, climate, disability, and racial justice. Our county is so incredibly sprawled out that most people have to depend entirely on a car to get them where they want to go. For many like myself, this is an incredibly expensive ask just to be able to navigate the community. Increased density makes increased transit more possible and communities more walkable and bikeable. Additionally, increased density and reduced parking requirements are better for the planet, the county's climate goals, and my generation's future. We should absolutely be incentivizing use of transit, walking and biking infrastructure as well as the development of affordable housing and mixed-use buildings. And as someone who receives an income of just $529 a month on SSI, if I could live somewhere affordable with nearby transit, I would not have a car because it's a huge expense. These zoning amendments are a crucial piece in the puzzle of building a more welcoming, diverse, affordable, and resilient Clackamas County. I hope you will support and approve them, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cassie. Commissioners, does anyone have a question for Cassie this evening? I don't see any hands up. Cassie, thank you, well done, and we appreciate your input and your attendance. Darcy, are next?
Next, I have Roseanne Johnson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Roseanne Johnson. I'm Assistant Director of Government Affairs at the Home Builders Association for Metro Portland. I'm also at my kids' swimming lessons, so you might hear that in the background. Tonight, I wanted to offer enthusiastic support on behalf of HBA as well as our joint author on our letter that is included in your packet tonight from the Portland Metro Association of Realtors. And tonight, we are very inextricably linked organizations in the real estate and housing and construction industries. And we also want to just say that this has been a long time coming and we are very supportive of all of the staff proposals. And we do have a couple of additional suggestions and recommendations. One would be because with the staff proposal for adding additional units for when a mixed use, a commercial use is included, we recommend that there be additional clarifying language that specifies that when the commercial use is, is developed on a site, that that commercial use can be allowed anywhere on the site, including in a separate structure from the residential areas or on a, on a separate floor of a mixed-use building. And that would just allow for a lot of flexibility, such as restaurants on a higher floor to take advantage of views, other retail or pseudo-industrial, commercial, light industrial uses to be, to be utilized on the topography of the site to its best use. And then the second recommendation is to add an additional reduction for required parking up to that 80% of median family income mark. You already have in your proposal up to 60% MFI to allow for a reduced parking reduction. And we're recommending that go up to 80% MFI. And that's really getting, you know, for Clackamas County, MFI, 100% of MFI is about somewhere between 80 and 82,000, depending on which, which year you take it from. As of 2019, it was about $80,000. So 80% of MFI is going to be around $66,000. That's your, you know, that's a teacher that's been working for several years, maybe has a master's. That's an electrician that probably is a journeyman or a journeywoman by then. These are your, these are your workforce that you're talking about. This is really important for maintaining jobs and living in the same area and contributing to that, that walkable and interconnected community that, that we always talk about and we heard about earlier. So with that, I will cede the floor and thank you for your time tonight.
Wow, Roseanne, thank you, really appreciate your input.
I, I have a question for Ms. Johnson.
Great, please, Michael.
I noticed in your comments that you talked about having commercial and businesses within residential housing. And I appreciate that, that's, that's, that's a good idea. Now, with that in mind, though, if we reduce the parking requirements based upon the residential uses in there, would that not impact the, the commercial ability for that commercial enterprise to, you know, make money? Let's say it was a, a restaurant or a cafe or something like that, and there was limited parking around there. How would you want to address that?
Oh, that's a great question, yeah. So I would say that I think with this, this current proposal as is, those, the parking reductions are only associated with the residential component of the, of the development. And so if, if a commercial component is included, I believe that your parking standards, and Martha, you please correct me if I'm wrong, but your parking standards would remain the same for the commercial elements of that development site. The only reduction in required parking would be associated with the residential components of that site. You're absolutely correct, Roseanne, this is Martha. Yes, so when, when the development were to, if the development were to come in with a commercial component and a residential component, you know, the, we go through design review and we would look at the units in the residential component and calculate how many parking spaces are required. We would look at the square footage and types of use in the commercial component and calculate how many parking spaces are required for that. There, it's a separate calculation. And so the commercial absolutely would be required to have additional parking on top of, on top of the housing.
I have, I have a question. Parking question. And I appreciate the fact that you have two different calculations. But I just think of trying to go into Portland and eat at a restaurant in some of these really cool hip neighborhoods that have this mixed use where they have residential on the upper floors and, and restaurants on lower floors. And you're, there is absolutely no place to park other than filling up these neighborhoods because everyone has to park there. So I, I guess, I'm a little not sure how well that will work, given what I've seen happen in Portland. So I, I understand the dilemma here, but I, I got a feeling that if you're, if you're too, reduce, reduce things too much where you have mixed use like that, you're going to have other parking issues that are going to affect the neighbors significantly. That's all.
Thank you, Tom, very, very much. Martha, I know that Roseanne came up with a couple suggestions, and one obviously was the mixed use. The other one, did you want to make a comment? I'm trying to, just a moment. Well, my notes are awful.
So it has to do with the parking reduction that we currently have set at housing available for households earning 60% or below the area's median income. And she asked for that reduction to be up to 80%. And the reason that we set it at 60 is partially because that's really what we had data for. And I think once you get up to 80% of areas' median income, where you are looking at somebody earning, you know, 70, or a household earning $70,000 a year. It may, those households tend to have cars. It may have two income, moderate, you know, income earners. And so we just, aside from the small reduction, just for all multifamily housing of .25 per unit, aside from that, we just didn't really see a strong basis in our data to reduce that farther, based on either car ownership or actual usage. And so we are also very aware that reducing parking is is a difficult conversation, and it's hard, it's hard to make a huge leap. And so what we are trying to do is propose something that is minimal for most households or most, you know, most developments, but has the opportunity to be a little bit bigger reduction in certain situations. And we can see how it goes, because quite frankly, we don't want to create a situation that is like Portland. You know, it's, we are aware of that concern, and we're trying to make small movements at this point.
Martha, just a question. Where did you get your data for this parking? Was it from a survey you did with people? Or was it some other way that you, you know, got that information? Surveys that you go and collect data from individuals tend to be skewed a little bit, and I was wondering if you actually had independent-type data that you were using?
Yes, we did, actually. Joy, early on in the project, did a lot of research and found some good data sources that looked at actual usage of parking lots in various locations, primarily around transit. We also have data from some affordable housing developers about actual usage in various affordable housing developments in the region. And I went out and looked at some that are in Clackamas County, because we actually have, through the Board of County Commissioners in the past, we've approved some parking reductions for some affordable housing developments. And I went and looked to see what was going on at the parking lots. And so, not particularly scientific data in that respect, but it was very obvious to me that the parking lots were not full or overflowing. And so the small reductions that we had allowed in the past were not causing problems, and we have not received complaints from neighbors that they were causing problems. So it's a combination of a lot of different data sources.
Well, sometimes, if you take a measure of what's in the parking lot during the day, you're going to find that there's less cars in the parking lot. But then when you come back in the evening, and people have come home from work, you're going to find those parking lots full. And so that was the reason for my question is, you know, the time of day that you take an analysis of what's in the parking lot is extremely important. So now, I'm just bringing that up.
And you're right, and I did look at several different times of day, different days. It wasn't based just simply on one drive-by. Tammy, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I clicked it, didn't work. Thank you, Michael, very, very much. And Murph, did you have a question for either Roseanne or Martha or others?
Yes, I did have a comment. I wanted to thank Ms. Johnson for coming in, especially with this input on mixed commercial with residential. Thinking about this through my study in the paperwork throughout the weeks we've been working on this, I question the affordability, if you're mixing business with, or the commercial structures within residential structures, your construction's going to be fairly expensive. I don't think you'll be seeing affordable housing within the commercial buildings. What's your experience with that, Ms. Johnson?
So as far as affordable housing goes, I think that that's going to be reliant on some of the other incentives that the staff have proposed in the current proposal. But as far as actually just getting housing to be built in general, because right now, it's not being built, because the maximum density allowance is too low at 25 dwelling units per acre. So simply increasing that to anything, which in this case, the proposal is 60 dwelling units an acre, is going to, and I agree with Martha, be the biggest, have the biggest impact on allowing a development to pencil in the first place. And if that development does pencil, some options for the mixed use could include having commercial built in the same building or having commercial built in a separate building. And I agree with you, yes, mixed-use construction is more expensive, because commercial construction is more expensive. With, when you have your commercial construction license, you have, you know, typically additional liability that you pay for. And then the materials themselves are more expensive, such as steel and concrete, rather than wood frame construction. And, and so, but, so when you have a mixed-use structure, you could have commercial components on the bottom floor. And then you could, you could transition to a low-rise mixed-use use structure with more residential-type materials that are not, you know, not quite as expensive in terms of finishes and structural support elements. But the recommendation that I was making for this case is to add clarifying language that would allow for any kind of commercial or retail to be developed on a site, anywhere on the site, in conjunction with residential. Because you're going to have a variety of shapes and sizes and topography and surrounding neighborhood characteristics that can fully be taken advantage of if you allow for the commercial or retail components to be built in their best areas and allow the residential components to be built in their best areas. And frankly, Commissioner, that could actually get at the affordability itself by allowing for those commercial-grade construction materials and licensed contractors to build the commercial components separate from the residential components, which could be more of a wood sic-frame construction at a more affordable rate. Hope that is clear.
Absolutely, thank you so much for your, I agree with you on that, that's excellent, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, too.
Great, I'm not seeing any more questions for you. Roseanne, thank you, very wonderful presentation and thought-provoking, and we appreciate your attendance and participation. Okay, Darcy? Do we have?
I have Tyler King.
Great, thank you. You want to unmute Tyler, wonderful, there you are, welcome.
Hi. My name's Tyler King, and I'm a member of PMAR. I'm a Realtor at Windermere Realty Trust and an unincorporated Clackamas County resident. I'm not speaking on behalf of PMAR or Windermere Realty Trust. These are my own personal remarks as a real estate professional and Clackamas County resident. I strongly support the three proposed amendments related to increasing the affordable housing density bonuses, reducing minimum parking requirements, and increasing the amount of housing allowed on certain commercial zones. The biggest issue facing the market today, in my opinion, is affordability. Market-wide in Clackamas County, prices have skyrocketed 20% from the same time just last year. In Clackamas County, where 70% of the housing stock is the most expensive form of housing, single-family homes, the first rung of the property ladder can be a real uphill battle for many buyers. Along those same lines, folks that are aging out of their homes have limited options if they want to stay in Clackamas County in terms of downsizing and aging in place. Increasing the number of housing types available to these buyers would greatly affect affordability and create more housing options for a wide array of home buyers. Looking at July of this year, the average single-family home in Clackamas County was $740,000, based on 699 sales. This is well out of reach of most first-time homebuyers. Contrast this with the average price of a condominium at $383,000, and only 41 sales in the month of July. And you can see that this is a housing type the county should be encouraging. I'm often asked as a Realtor, who can afford these $700,000, $800,000, $900,000 homes? And my answer is, the folks that purchased $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 homes five to 10 years ago. This is the property ladder at work. So how can this be achieved? I say by making development flexible and feasible. Forcing private developers to provide certain amenities, such as parking, which eats up lots of space and lots of the budget, reduces the feasibility of larger-scale condominium projects. Additionally, the only way developers are going to take advantage of any affordability bonus is if it pencils. Obviously not happening now. This amendment moves us in the right direction, where the bonus incentivizes developers to actually build more homes. 94% of all homeowners in Clackamas County live in single-family homes. It will only get more difficult for first-time homebuyers to get on the first rung of the property ladder, and more difficult for downsizers and emptinessers to actually stay in Clackamas County until the county uses the tools at its disposable, at its disposal to encourage more housing types, and thus making the county more affordable to a wider range of buyers. Flexibility leads to feasibility, and hopefully, more housing options for future and current Clackamas County residents. I really appreciate your time.
Tyler, I have a question for you.
Please go ahead, Michael.
What's causing this demand? Are we having an influx of people? And are these people that are coming in here, from what I've heard you say, they're not affording, they're not capable of affording the housing that we have? So why are they coming here?
This is a great place to live, I've lived here most of my life. Yes, the problem is, we don't have enough houses for everybody. For example, I had some buyers that were going to move up here from California, not rich Californians, just regular Californians. And they wanted to be closer to their son and granddaughter that lived in Milwaukee. They said they liked a condo, two bedrooms, one and a half baths, something along those lines. And I said, hey, we got three options. We got the 70s stuff on Lake Road and Freeman Road. We have the stuff above the retail downtown by City Hall. And we have the over-55 stuff down Lovewood Drive. That was our options. They didn't end up moving here, but, you know, there's a couple of sporadic townhouse developments. There's just not enough houses. And the thing is, the houses that are here are, the average price in July was $740,000.
So if we built more houses, or more housing, then that would reduce the cost of the housing? Is that what you're saying? Or with this proposal here, we're talking about building more housing that was, costs less to live in? What's the difference in there?
Well, I mean, we need to use every tool in our toolbox. Building more, it's simple supply and demand. More housing will reduce the price of housing. That, what we have is a shortage of housing right now. If you overlay that with affordability bonuses and things like that, we open up the opportunity for homeownership to more people. And so the folks making, you know, 60% of the area median income, they become buyers, they get on the property ladder and can actually build some real wealth. If they're going to be renters their whole life, they're not going to be building this wealth. These are the same folks that only own, a couple only owns one car, you know, and that's why it makes sense to have one parking spot per unit.
So on the flip side of that, though, is if we had employment here that had a higher wage, they would be able to afford the housing. Am I wrong there?
If you have more money, you can afford more expensive housing, yes, I agree with you there. But I'd also say for every resident that can come in and afford a $740,000 house, I think we need several residents that are working in retail, working in grocery stores, working in places to support those residents. I think those are, those people moving here are actually job creators and creates demand, especially if you have a neighborhood. If you create spaces where people are consuming where they live, I think sometimes in Clackamas County, that's one thing that we don't have. We don't consume where we live, we consume other places. But creating places where we consume where we live, and we have a little bit more of a vertical type of housing stock that has several different types of housing within it, it just creates more dynamic place and creates more jobs and has an net benefit.
So as a Realtor, you have concentrated most of your business within Clackamas County. Have you had any exposure to the local, you know, the other counties within our area here as far as what they're doing?
Yeah, I would say last year, I think 50% of my business is in Clackamas County. The rest of it was divided between Multnomah County, some in Washington County, and I also did some stuff in Yamhill County, just, I enjoy a glass of pinot like anyone else. So I'll do a deal out there if I can make it. So what are other counties doing? Well, I don't think we should be comparing, I mean, Clackamas County's different than Multnomah County in a multitude of ways, I don't think we need to be comparing ourselves to that, just as we're different than Washington. I think we have a lot of, we have a lot of opportunity here. And I think these are proposals, there's no downside to it. We change these, we make these amendments to the zoning code, and there's no downside. The worst that can happen is we'll get more housing, and it'll be more affordable.
So from your experience, then, will we begin to mirror what the other counties have, or not?
What do the other counties have that we would mirror? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, what I'm asking is, if we accept or approve these three proposals that are here, are we going to look more like Washington and Loma and Yamhill Counties? Are we going to still remain Clackamas County?
Well, we're going to still remain Clackamas County. I mean, if you look at the maps where we're talking about the commercial zones that we're talking about, I mean, these are, these are a small percentage of the county. I don't see how that's going to change the landscape of the county in any way. It's going, we're having, we're going to have more people moving here, we know that for sure. From the housing needs analysis that we had, you know, in 2019, we need more housing units, we know that, and we know that our population is growing. I'm just saying that we need to create places for these people to live. Not every, you know, if we just want to have Clackamas County be a place where the entry level is, you have to be able to afford an $800,000 home, and you are required to drive two cars, you know, I don't think that's a very dynamic county. So I think we should be encouraging a diversity of housing stock, which we don't have right now. Like I said, you know, 70% of the housing stock right now is single-family homes. And 94% of homeowners in Clackamas County live in single-family homes. So I think that's a place we can work on and create some affordability without much downside at all, without changing the landscape of, you know, what Clackamas County looks like.
I fully understand what you're saying, Tyler. I moved up here over 20 years ago, and I like the way Clackamas County was set up, and that's why I'm here. And that's why I'm here. And I'm a little concerned about making some major changes here. Now, I can move out, but I don't want to do that just because I don't want to do that. I like it here and we're changing the community is important to me.
Well, Michael, I just want to say real quick, you know, if, these people are going to move here regardless, right? We don't, we already have congestion problems. I don't think we should encourage more cars to be in the same area that we already have. There's just not room for them. I guess I don't quite understand what you're, are we going to turn into like urban wasteland, which is like a concrete jungle? I just don't see that happening. The other thing you have to remember is, these proposals that are in front of us, these three zoning amendments, you make these changes, we're, you know, real estate moves very slowly, especially development on the scale that we're talking about, it moves very slowly. Just getting developers in to do feasibility analysis and then figure out if they can get the permits, then getting the approvals, then breaking ground, then building. We're talking a very long timeline here. And, you know, you make these changes, it's not all of a sudden, we're going to have a, you know, a bunch of buildings being built with no parking and we're a concrete jungle along McLaughlin Boulevard. It just doesn't, this is not going to work that way. It's just not possible. Real estate moves very slowly.
Michael, thank you so much. Did anyone else have any other questions for Tyler this evening? I don't see any raised hands. Any final, oh, okay. All right, Tyler, wow, thank you. Really appreciated all the facts and figures and comments and your participation and thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And Darcy, do we have a?
We have John Sealing.
Wonderful, great. Hey, John, welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Sealing. I'm a broker with Keller Williams Realty, selling homes in Clackamas County. I'd like to read an excerpt from a National Association of Realtors report published today that offers some comments in support of all three strategies. First-time buyers are continuing to struggle in this market and are pushing rental rates higher as they give up on buying, according to NAR. The share of first-time buyers in July was thirty percent, down from thirty-one percent in June and thirty-four percent in July of 2020. It's my belief that priority be given to underserved communities and first-time buyers, which means more housing for people at lower price points, more townhomes, more condos and more apartments. To do this, developers must be given incentives to build these types of housing profitably or they will move on to other markets like Boise. They won't wait. Through your support of these code changes, you can seize the opportunity to create inclusive communities through human scale and shared space development that higher density accommodates. More housed people means more stable living situations, means more employed people, more people going to school, more taxpayers and fewer people on the street. I encourage you to boldly push forward all three strategies and thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, very, very much. Do any commissioners have questions for John? Wonderful, John, thank you so much. Really appreciated that information and your participation.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks. Good night. Okay, we have completed our list of activities on this hearing. And so at this moment, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Unless, Darcy, did I miss anybody? Okay, I think so, right, thank you. All right, before we go into planning commission discussion, are there any further questions of staff from the planning commission? Carrie, I am Ben Kev.
Here Stevens, I made a comment earlier before the public testimony started and I'm not really sure if the staff had an opportunity to answer my questions. So I'd like to ask the question of the staff and I'm happy to try to repeat it again unless you guys all remember what I said.
It'd be great if you could repeat it. I'll have to go back to my scribbles, but.
That's all right.
I'm not sure what the specific question was.
My question was, is there a set of metrics that we can try to develop and revisit it within a certain timeframe rather than just taking this at face value and faith that it's going to work? That's just the gist of it.
So I may have to actually punt this over to Karen because there are a number of metrics that we track related to the board's performance Clackamas goals, some of which relate directly to, like she mentioned, the seven hundred units of affordable housing. I don't know how we are tracking that and I don't know if there is a way for us to track the effect of the changes we're making now and look back. I mean, it seems like a good idea. I'm just not sure about the mechanism that we would use. And maybe that's something we need to look into more. And I'm going to let Karen talk after I said all that.
I would like to put a comment on that. Carrie is completely right. This is a long-term project. We're looking at phase one here. We need to see how phase one impacts the next step, phase two and phase three. And so we need to put together something that says how we are doing with each one of these phases.
So with that, I definitely appreciate both of your recommendations and kind of building on what I think Martha had was going along the right track with respect to our performance Clackamas and the measurements that we do already. I think what, what I was thinking about was that we can take that planning commission recommendation, we can work with Jennifer and DTD staff and understand how we can fold that in. Now, what I heard you say, and I think it really does make sense to have a certain year mark, like, let's say five years out. We would need to make, again, everything's a bunch of assumptions, but I think about the fact that what we're doing here tonight is talking about at least one measure has to do with increasing density in commercial areas. So we could report back then on number of units that were created within the commercial area. Now, we won't know the delta of what would have been created, but we can at least keep track and understand what kind of developments occurring in those areas. So I think we could also report back on affordable units that have been created and begin to understand that. I think the one thing that would be more challenging to do is understand the impact of the the reduction in the parking standards specifically and be able to track that as a unit factor. But, but overall, I would say that, you know, the planning commission being able to ask DTD to be able to keep track and report back on this, it seems to be something that would be doable.
Excellent, very, very good. I appreciate that approach.
Martha, did you have something?
Well, I think with relation, related to parking, Karen's right. We won't really know if it, if additional units were built because of the parking, but what we could track is units built and how much parking was built with them because we know that through our design review applications.
But you could also see with that parking issue is, has it decreased the commercial value of that property? Or has it affected it and how? You know, particularly in those areas where you have the multi, you know, multi-residential and commercial businesses going. What has been the impact on that?
I'll have to think about that one. About the effect on the commercial value of the property? Because I suppose one could argue that we're increasing the commercial value of the property if more housing can be built. And so I'm not quite sure how you would balance those things. But we can certainly think about what those metrics would be and get back to you with some sort of timeframe and things that we could potentially track.
I'm addressing this from a personal issue. My dentist is in a building that was, that has apartments on the top and businesses on the bottom. And she was not in that before. And now there's a very big problem with parking in order to get to her business. And I know it has impacted what she has been capable of doing. And she may be even going to move out of it because of the parking problem.
Great, Michael, thank you very much. Good questions and that's a nice analogy or example. Kevin, I believe you have a question.
I feel like Carrie kept trying to say something and we interrupted her. I'm sorry, but.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Martha. I just, I am not interested in, I think it's really difficult and I don't, I don't think we should try to do cause and effect for each one of these three different proposals. So that's not what I was suggesting. So I think if we can just use this as a package and because as a package, as it moves forward, if we could just develop some metric and report back, I think that will help me personally with, you know, making the decisions in the long run. So thank you so much for working on that. I appreciate it very much.
Carrie, thank you very much. Thanks, Martha, for catching that. Kevin, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, question and a comment. So I know, Martha, we talked about this a little bit before back in July and this first session was geared to building affordable housing for apartments, townhouses, condos. When in the phase are we going to talk about the single-family dwellings? How we increase that to really bring down the price of housing? And then secondly, to Mr. King's point about the Realtor, that as a younger person in Clackamas County, a lot of friends that, I don't want to live in a condo. I don't want a townhouse. I don't want an apartment. I want a house where I can have a driveway and a yard. And I think that's a lot of what rural Clackamas County is wanting. They want their property to be able to not be next to everyone. And so I just want to know, when, when are we going to look at that? Because I think that's how we keep the, the character of Clackamas County and that's how we really bring down pricing, pricing for our first-time homebuyers. So when's that going to come up, Martha?
The next phase in the housing project, which we have, which we have already started working on, is the House Bill 2001 implementation. And that was the legislation that's requiring certain counties and cities to look at their urban, single-family residentially zoned areas and allow for more housing types, the middle housing, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, cottage clusters. None of those changes will directly affect the rural area. We're not, there's no proposed changes to increase density in the rural areas. But we will be looking at our urban, single-family areas soon. You're going to, you're going to start hearing about it very soon. Did that answer your question? I'm not sure what, what the second part of it related to rural properties was, except that, except that we're not looking at rural properties right now.
It was, yeah, is how do we, you know, the county do that to encourage developers to create those more single-family housing units within all areas of the county?
Well, the piece that we're looking at now is what we're required to do in the urban, single-family zones. As far as rural, we don't really have any work that I'm aware of, plans either through the Housing Strategies Project or not that relates to housing in the rural area. One of the reasons is that all of our rural zones, be it rural residential or the natural resource, the farm and forest zones, are very heavily regulated by state law. And so there are limited things that we can do in any of those zoning districts. And so there's, we really are, we are very limited. And in particular, we, I mean, we just, we can't allow multifamily development or higher-density development in those areas.
I think, Martha, we're conflating, so I'm not saying we take what we're doing in the certain zones with the multifamily and bring those out to the rural areas. I'm saying, how can we encourage more regular development in those rural areas? And is there, and does the county have any plans or has talked to any developers about buying, you know, creating these lots? Because I know out in Sandy, over probably the last fifteen years, they annexed land and they built a huge thing of single-family housing, hundreds of units that people bought up for the $200,000 prices that are now $400,000. And in my comment, it's always been, how can we create more of those so they're at that $200,000 mark for people like me and the rest members of our next generation?
Well, so I, okay, and I think the answer is not in the rural area. There are very limited opportunities out in the rural area. And so those are things that will have to happen on smaller urban lots. If they're going to be either smaller, single-family homes or, you know, the, to be able to get the density out of an acre that would make a lower price point pencil for a developer. And so I don't, I don't know what, if anything, we can do outside of the urban area to try to encourage that, just because there's such limited opportunity.
I think the one thing that I will add, and I think you noted this, Kevin, is, is that there are those areas that may be within urban growth boundaries that cities are growing into. And that's where we'll also see single-family development, be it in those areas around Sandy or those areas around Happy Valley or those areas around Oregon City. Those are areas that we'll probably see some single-family development.
Excellent questions. Thank you very much, Kevin. Well done. Murph, you have a question?
Yes, I've been sitting too long. I, just thinking about this and what Mr. King had brought up, that if we increase the densities within commercial zones and start to limit the parking, you know, ten years from now, how many electric cars are going to be out there? And how will you plug it in when you come home? If, if you have to park it three blocks away, is this something that we should also be considering down the road? That perhaps electric vehicles are going to be taking over above fossil fuel? I think this is something we'll have to look at. And also what Ms. Johnson brought up about the mixed commercial, I think is a bonus. I think that's something that we should definitely have language included. But when we come around to making the recommendation, I'll try and add that.
Well, and Murph, where you live, you'll have to tow a generator, but other than that, all is good. All right, we have another question from Tom.
Well, actually, mine's less of a question, more of a, I'm ready to deliberate.
Oh, we're, we're right on the cusp.
My feeling is, like any, any new, new change, there will be pluses and minuses, but to do nothing is not an option. So I fully support what the staff has recommended. I agree with Murph that suggestion from, what was her name, Roseanne? Association, that was a good suggestion. I'm a little nervous about the parking, but at the end of the day, we've got to do something. Obviously, there were some really well-thought-out comments from the folks that testified today that were all right on target. So I'm, I'm ready to move on. We've got, we're just a drop in the bucket in Clackamas County, if you think about it. We've got all these other cities that have our players in this as well, that are going to contribute to this as well. So this is just one piece of the puzzle. And the areas affected are really not all that significant in our purview. You're probably going to see more, more of an impact when, depending on what the cities do, the county. So I fully support what staff has proposed, along with the recommendation from the Realtor Association.
So. Tom, thank you. You know what? You were the last raised hand, so we are going. Tom, thank you. You know what? You were the last raised hand, so we are going to consider you the first deliberation for this evening. And that was a very nice way to kick that off. Was there any other final deliberation thought you wanted to share before we move on? Okay, all right. Can I maybe ask Murph to go second with his deliberation?
I second.
We don't have a motion yet, but you get ready. Was there anything else you'd, I mean, we'd like to hear how you feel about?
I, absolutely. We have to move on. Yeah, this is a huge bonus for these areas that we're targeting. This is definitely something that's been overdue. This is a move in the right direction. Yeah, will parking be an issue? Absolutely. But buying cars is going to be an issue also. I mean, look how expensive they are. They will be out of these, out that, out of that price range. And I think adding the commercial will just, commercial mixed will absolutely inspire these neighborhoods to grow. I think it's great. I'd like to move.
Okay, well, hold that move.
Tammy?
Yes. Michael, would you like to go next?
I, I would like to see us vote on each of these three proposals separately. One, two, and three.
Give me a second to think about that for a minute. That would put me totally off script, but I don't know that it's impossible. But you may, would you?
When Martha came up, she said that these were independently items, and that we could vote on them separately.
Sure. Would you like to go ahead with deliberating, and would you like to deliberate on each of the three separately?
No, I, I'm, I'm okay. We, we put a motion up for the first, a motion for the second, a motion for the third one, and then we take a vote.
Right. But would you like to go ahead and share your thoughts, you know, through the deliberation?
My thoughts are, I'm okay with one and three. I'm not so good with the parking, parking issue. So that's the one, that issue that I am very concerned about.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Michael. I appreciate that. Carrie, would you like to share your thoughts, please?
I am, you know, notwithstanding the comment about looking for metrics, I'm in support of all three of these proposals, as has been recommended by the staff. So whoever, Murph, if you end up making the motion, I would, I would appreciate adding the metrics component to, to the recommendation.
Absolutely.
Very good. Louise, would you like to share your thoughts, please?
Yeah, as, this is a complex issue, and it's, you know, there's pluses and minuses, and I'm a little bit conflicted on some of it. I'm always concerned about sprawl. Yet at the same time, I'm concerned about affordable housing. I'm concerned that sometimes we offer things, I mean, the we is the big general we, way beyond even Clackamas County. Things are offered to builders as incentives, but they don't follow through, and they just build what they can make the most money on the fastest. So with this money involved, there's always concern. I, you know, there's so many things have been said tonight. I agree with Murph, and, and the future is electric vehicles. And, you know, we need to think about that. I also have issues with the parking. But like I said, there's, there's good and bad. So in other words, I'm conflicted. I would see myself voting to move forward on at least two out of the three, if not the third. But again, concerns, and I'm glad we're going to be putting in something about tracking the metrics to see how this, you know, how this helped people and to get affordable housing. I'm just always concerned about super-high-density units, at least in other parts of this, of the country, where it's not become the magical panacea that they intended, and it, and it had problems. So again, like I say, with reservations is how I feel, you know, positive, but reservations.
Right, right. Well put, very well put. Thank you, Louise. Stephen, you've been awful quiet this evening. I'm a little worried. Tell us what your thoughts are.
I'm here. You know, staff did a great presentation, and people have asked questions and concerns about parking, and it's hard to say what the next 10, 20 years for roads and parking will be. So I do support all three, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Awesome. Stephen, thank you very much. And Kevin, and I'm only going to let you be last for a little while. I know you're the newbie, but.
Well, I, I'm happy to go whenever you want me to.
No, no, no. I would love to hear your thoughts, please.
So, yeah, I have a lot of concerns about the parking. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm willing that you're right. Everyone's been right. We got to try something. I still have some concerns overall, big picture, that we're taking a shot in the dark, and we're basically kind of, we're throwing spaghetti and everything else at the wall, hoping something sticks to do this, which is not a bad option. It's, it's an option, but still a lot of concerns that, you know, this affordable housing, it, it just kind of centered on apartments, townhouses, and condos, and I just, I don't think that's the only way to get there. And I, I had some concerns in the previous materials of some of the studies that came out of the Housing Needs Assessment that was big, a lot of information from the Milwaukee area. And the Milwaukee area is not all of Clackamas County, doesn't have a lot with the rural areas out here. So I have some concerns, so I think we can get there, but it, it's going to be a long road.
Thank you very much. Well done, Kevin. Thank you. Honestly, I can't add anything. I think everyone has clearly identified that something has to be done, and is this the best? Well, I guess at this point, we have to hope so. I think staff has done as everyone has shared, an incredible job. And so we need to begin to, to move forward. Now that we're done with our deliberation, I, I've been thinking how to do this motion, and I do believe we want to do it correctly. So I think how I would recommend it, something like, pardon me? Oh, okay. Something like, you know, a move to recommend approval of ZDO 277, number one, affordable housing density bonus to the Board of County Commissioners. So we would want to go with the ZDO 277 in there, and then one, and then two, and then three. So just want to make sure that we're, we've got a very clear motion for Darcy, of course, but more for the Board of County Commissioners. So Murph, are you prepping a motion, a, a round, or three rounds of motions? Oh, you're, you're muted there.
Yeah, I have to get past that first. Okay.
Get him off of mute. Okay, are, are you ready to, because like, the first one is affordable housing density bonus.
Yes, I'm, I make a motion that we recommend ZDO 277, number one, increase affordable housing density bonus.
Perfect. Do we have? Oh, and I think Stephen jumped in on second. So now I have wonderful verbiage from the staff, because I'm a horrible summarizer. It has been moved by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Schrodle that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners of approval of ZDO 277, one, affordable housing density bonus. And unless there's any further questions or corrections, are there any? Then do you?
Yes, I want, yes. Add, that we add a metrics to that?
Okay, now you've amended it. Is, does the metrics go with this one? I'm sorry, we.
I don't, I don't think a metric is part of zoning coaching. I think that would be a recommendation that we would make in addition to passing the motion, motions. Clearly, that's not a zoning, land use issue having metrics. That's more for the county's benefit to, to demonstrate whether or not these changes have made. So I don't think it, I don't think it applies to the motion. I think it's something we should take up after the fact, and if that's indeed a recommendation that the commission wants to make, we would make that as a separate item.
Tom, thank you very, very much. I was, I didn't, I didn't think it was a part of it, but I didn't want to mess up there. Thank you, Tom. Okay, so unless there's any further comment or question about that motion, Darcy, would you be kind enough to take the role? You're on mute. Thank you. Commissioner Loebz?
Yes, affirmative.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrodle?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous? Thank you, Darcy, very much. Okay, Murph, I think the second one, and I'm just looking at Martha's slides, is right-size multifamily parking. If you don't want us to use that verbiage, Martha, in the motion, do you want to give me proper ver, is that fine?
I'm, I think it's really just to amend parking requirements for multifamily development.
Amend parking requirements for multifamily parking. Are you ready, Murph?
I'm ready.
Oh, I knew you would be. Rock on.
Okay. I make a motion to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to accept ZDO 277, number two. And that was a right-size multifamily parking requirement. I, sorry, I messed up there.
And Louise, thank you, Louise, for the second. Okay, and here I go back to my proper, oh, and I already lost it. Okay. It has been moved by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Loebz that we, oh, sorry. That the, and I'm going to use the same verbiage, just so it's consistent, right-size multifamily parking of ZDO 277 be recommended to the Board of County Commissioners. Any further discussion on that motion?
I'd like to make a comment. I think this is a bad move. And I think this is going to come back to bite us. And I, I would recommend that we not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. And will you take the role, please, Darcy? Commissioner Loebz?
No.
Commissioner Moss?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrodle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
The vote is four in favor and three against. Oh, Commissioner Stevens, I'm so sorry.
That's all right. And I am a yes.
So the vote is five yes, three no.
Very good. Okay, and then our last one, unless, and not that it helped us last time, but the number three that is on Martha's slide is increase maximum allowed housing density in commercial zones. Will that work, Martha? Yes, it will. All right, Murph.
I make a motion to the, to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to accept ZDO 277, number three, increase allowed housing density in commercial zones, and add mixed commercials on all levels.
Well done, Murph. And do we have a second to that motion?
I will second that. Chair Stevens?
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Moss. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Very good. All right. So it has been moved by Commissioner Murphy, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Moss that the Board of County Commissioners be advised to support ZDO 277 with regard to increase allowed housing density in commercial zones. Darcy, would you kindly take?
I think he made an amendment with that motion also.
And he made an amendment. Okay, and with the amendment, that mixed-use zone be addressed, including.
Commercial, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Mixed-use commercial.
It was to add mixed commercial on all levels.
Perfect. Thank you, Darcy. Get it in the minutes right, I'll be covered. Thank you. Well done. All right. And if you'll take the role, Darcy? Commissioner Loebz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrodle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stevens? Yes, thank you.
That is unanimous.
Yay. So we are done with that hearing. Well done, everyone. A lot of work for, by everyone. Gosh, you know, Karen and Joy and Martha and all of your teams, thank you so much. Well done. Looking forward to round two.
So back to Carrie and Murph's comment about the metrics. I'm wondering how we want to leave that, whether that's just something in the notes, or if that's a specific recommendation that we want everyone to weigh in on or not. I didn't want to leave it hanging, since I kind of derailed it earlier.
Right, right. And Martha, can you, or Karen, can you give us some, what would be the best way to bring this forward to the Board of County Commissioners?
You're on mute. I'll start, since I hit my unmute button first. But the way that I would see it, it would be a recommendation to the planning department to be able to create a, a metrics and bring, bring that back to the planning commission. I don't think it needs to go through the Board of County Commissioners. But I do think it's worthwhile to have an official kind of recommendation that comes from you that you're able to all agree upon. Formalizes it a little bit more than just us taking it out of the minutes. So that's, that's my comments to it. I don't know, Martha, if you have anything in addition that you might have.
So, so how, how about Murph, you making a motion that we recommend to the planning department, that they, they develop some metrics for this?
Absolutely.
And, and Michael, you can make motions too, if you would like to be the motion maker on that. You kind of just did it.
And before, before Commissioner Wilson makes the motion, I'm wondering, the other component of this is, I was thinking that maybe it could just be added to the quarterly work plans or annual work plans that the planning department goes through, if somebody would remember to put it some dates, to come back and, you know, maybe develop the metrics by certain, as part of the work plan, and then, and then have it be reported at some other point in time out in the future. So that might be another good way to capture what it is that we're trying to accomplish here.
But as a motion and voted on by the commission here, that would be a more formal way of doing it, and I believe that's what Karen was looking for, something formal from us.
I, I have a question quickly on that. Karen, would QuickBooks be a way to track this? In some way, shape, or form? Be a spreadsheet?
So I, I don't know if we need to get to the details of exactly how we track this, because we'd probably be working with staff and the way that they're reviewing. because we'd probably be working with staff and the way that they're reviewing stuff. So we can even come back to you after staff has the ability to kind of kind of work through the best way to report back. But I do think um, the direction about um, desiring metrics on a regular basis perhaps attached to the bi-annual, the every other year work program to report on um, the impact of these changes, something like that. Also, so a a a a motion uh, to uh, request that the department put together some metrics or develop some metrics that would allow the county commissioners to uh, review uh, our progress.
That's a perfect motion. Uh, Michael, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Thanks, Kevin, very much. All right, any further discussion or, Darcy, would you like to take the role? I think we're ready for roll.
Commissioner Loebz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Sure, why not?
Commissioner Schrodle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye. Thank you, Darcy, so much. Okay, and I do in fact believe that wraps up our hearing on the housing strategies. We don't have a lot left, but uh, please raise your hand if you just need two to three minutes break. Anybody? Okay. I mean, if we can make it through another five or 10 minutes, I think we're there. We have two sets of minutes this evening, uh, July 26th and August 9th, which will want to take them independently. So were there any corrections? And and I wasn't in attendance, so I do not, but does anyone have any corrections or um, suggestions on the July 26 minutes? There not being any, um, do we have to do a motion or can we accept them by acclamation, Darcy?
Normally, you'd do it by emotion. How since I'm a court clerk for Washington County, yeah.
That that'd be no problem. I I mean, our hamlet, we do acclamation, but this is a little more serious. I would entertain a motion, then, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the planning commission for the July 26, 2021 meeting.
Perfect. Second?
I think that.
Uh, we have Louise seconding. So we have a motion from Commissioner Moss, a second by Commissioner Loebz to accept uh, the July 26, 2021 planning commission draft minutes as written. And do you want to take a role, please, Darcy?
Commissioner Loebz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
I I'm sorry, Darcy, was this for July 26th?
Yes.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrodle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stevens?
I too need to abstain. Thank you, Darcy. Okay, now we'll move on to what was emailed to us by Darcy, the August 9th minutes. I hope everyone had an opportunity to review those. Were there any corrections to those minutes? Not hearing from anyone. I would certainly appreciate a motion.
I will. We accept those minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you so much, Tom. All right, any further discussion? All right, Darcy, you want to take? Oh, oh, so the motion was made. I need to articulate this stuff. Motion was made by Commissioner Wilson and seconded by Commissioner Peterson to accept the August 9th, 2021 draft planning commission meeting minutes.
Commissioner Loebz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pack?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrodle?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Again, abstain. Thank you. Okay. Very, very good. Thank you for all those minutes, Darcy. Um, other business, I did have a question. And I, you know, I don't know if this is the group, but I received on an email um, Development Direct, which I think um, is fabulous. It probably is a wonderful development from uh, COVID and needing to be able to, and what it is, is applying for um, permits, a lot of different kinds of permits online. And that was great. And we reviewed it at the hamlet level, but I'm bringing it to this level because I didn't know about this. And my partner is a general contractor. He knew all about it. He gets permits every day, but many, many people, residents, communities, don't. I mean, a lot of times, many times, I receive emails or phone calls that say, you know, do I need a permit for this? And of course, I'm always sending them on to the county, but it is really, really, really nice to know at a CPO level or at a community level that this is a pretty big and wonderful change. Um, can you can you talk to us about that a little bit? And can one of you or or should I talk to somebody else?
So um, I'll start because I know the least amount about um, since I am in charge of long range planning and not development itself. Um, but it is a system, it's an online system to be able to accept um, development applications um, online in a real formal manner, in a real coordinated manner. So I'm going to actually let um, either Joy or Martha, maybe Joy actually has uh, um, a lot of hands on. It it hasn't quite kicked off yet. I think it goes live September 1st or something.
It does, yeah.
Uh, or it goes live really soon. It's not live yet, but it is um, I'm going to let Joy speak a little bit.
September 1st.
Nope, September 1st, okay. Go, Joy.
It is a system that will allow different departments to review the same site plans and make comments on the same site plans and have a follow up with the applicant in a coordinated manner. And so it will be very beneficial for us to be able to coordinate with other departments as well as with the applicant.
Okay.
So so how much time do you think this is going to save you?
It depends on the permit and what what is submitted by the applicant and what we are reviewing. Um, because there are times where multiple departments request a revised site plan and not knowing what change between the different site plans or the different uh, documents in an application can make it time consuming to review all the different versions to make sure it didn't mod didn't change in a way that would impact the zoning regulations. And so it, for some applications, it won't save any time. And for some, it will save a significant amount of time.
So for the applicant, then, is there a way for them to track the progress through the county? Uh, pro- uh, process for approving this so that they know where it's at and who to talk to if it's delayed?
Yes. Sorry, Joy. Go ahead.
My my internet is unstable, and so Martha, I did not catch all of that, so please, please respond.
Yes.
What I was looking for is that, is there some way for the applicant to uh, review the progress of the application through the county so that they're not sitting there in limbo and wondering, where is it?
Yes. Um, there is, I have a fairly limited understanding of how Development Direct works after having gone through three trainings. Um, because, well, no, no, that wasn't that, it it's complicated from our end. But my understanding is that from the customer's end, there will be an interface that is fairly easy to use um, in which you can see like a flow chart of where exactly your permit is. Um, and then I pasted in the chat a link to our Development Direct page. It also has and will have more um, links to trainings for people if they're interested in taking the trainings. And I think even embedded in the Development Direct, when you start using it as a customer, there will be, they have little videos set up of how to do certain things. Um, it is, it's different, but um, I feel like it's, once you sort of go through the training and go through it once, it's it's a very user friendly program. A lot of other jurisdictions are already using it.
And Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, well, having dealt with City of Portland permitting for many, many years. Uh, and uh, I think the city went to an online system here a couple of years ago. I was still working with the city, even though I was retired as part of a construction management group. I believe Washington County already had a system like this in place. Uh, from an owner's perspective, which I was one for many years, uh, this is a significant improvement. Uh, for the owners, the contractors, uh, it's a way to eliminate uh, a lot of paper and printing. There's a lot of benefits to uh, what uh, what this system is. And I'm assuming it, uh, like any new system, there will be some bugs to work out. Uh, but uh, by far, I applaud the county for getting on board. It's a it's a great step in the right direction. And um, I'm uh, pleased to see that now all three counties uh, have these systems in place.
Thank you, Tom. And Carrie?
I I was just going to echo um, Commissioner Peterson's comments. So so a lot of times when you go through a development um, applications and permitting process, one agency will change requirements. So for example, transportation will tell you, you can't have a a driveway there for whatever reason, which necessitates somebody else to change, like water department, to move the water meter from here to there, two feet. And then that change requires the stormwater system to go to a different location. And all these one action causes all these different dominus to fall. Well, if you don't, the way that this system is supposed to work is it's seen real time. And I don't know if the Development Direct is same as what we use in Washington County, but you're supposed to be able to see it in real time. So if somebody makes a comment, all of a sudden, the people that are needing to look at it gets notified so that they can go and say, oh, you're doing this now. Now you got to do these other things. So to the the advantages really to the to the applicants who can see things and what kind of changes are needed, when the changes are needed. And it's not like, you know, you have to wait for six weeks before all of that to come back and then realize that. And one agency doesn't have any idea why the developer developer is all of a sudden changing these requirements that you already said that was okay. Well, it's being necessitated by other things. So I I applaud, again, I would echo Commissioner Peterson's comments. It's a good thing that county is moving in this direction. Um, and it should be good for everybody.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Carrie. That's really good input. I've never dealt with a system like this. I just think if it if I had a request, it would be for especially CPOs. That is their A number one primary um, task. And that is to guide their citizens through the application when they've got questions or need advice. And then we, of course, review land applications and um, provide input back to the county. So we're kind of that conduit from the citizens to the citizens, and the same with the county. Um, I'd like to see a little more of an outreach to our CPOs about here it comes. And for your lone little person out here wanting to build um, a barn or put a driveway in, what does that mean to you? And what are you going to see? And how who do we, how do we answer questions? It, I know for me, it would be incredibly helpful to understand a lot more about this. And um, I'm excited. I think it is a great idea. It just was a bit of a broadside to a CPO. So other than that, thank you very, very much. Any other comments regarding the Development Direct?
I I I think it's a great idea. And whoever recommended this needs to have an attaboy or an attic girl or whatever. This is an excellent way to do business.
Yes, or at least an affordable house. Just kidding. Okay, was there any other other business from commissioners or staff?
I just have a question. I was looking on the schedule. See, there's nothing planned for the rest of the year. Is that true?
At this time, at this time, that is the case.
So we're.
I'm not saying there won't be.
Yeah.
So we're going to get a break for a few months? Won't be able to see your happy.
A couple of weeks, a couple of weeks.
That could change?
It will change.
Of course, it can always change.
So.
I thought we were going to get a vacation.
On the 13th?
I hmm, I would have to check. Jennifer's on vacation. I I believe that there will not be any meetings in September, but don't make plans yet. Um, I'll check with her as soon as she gets back. There are several things percolating that will come to you um, October, November-ish. And we, as soon as we have finished percolating those, you will know. Um, but there there will be some meetings.
Very good. And uh, were any of you staff delegated to give us a Board of County Commissioners update or report? Or was there anything that?
Well, the only things that I am aware of um, with the board are on September 15th, the proposed um, comprehensive plan zone change application that you all had your hearing for um, two weeks ago for the property that's in the Damascus area. That was two weeks ago, right? Um, that's going to the board on September 15th. This package of housing amendments under ZDO two seventy seven is going to the board for public hearing on October 6th. Um, and the board had their public hearing last Wednesday for Glenn um, Glenn Hamburg and Jennifer's package of minor um, and time sensitive code amendments. And I believe that they approved everything with no changes. Okay, um, and that'll be a setup.
As submitted by staff.
Okay, and so that will go for adoption um, in September at some point in time. I'm not sure if they have a date.
Beautiful. Wonderful. Thank you. Um, I do want to just take two seconds. Thank you, Murf, for taking the hot seat while I was gone the last two hearings. I really do appreciate that. Glad to be back. And is there any further news, comments, questions from the commission before we adjourn?
I I would just like to applaud the planning department. This is awesome. As far, I mean, this has been multi-years, as I remember, uh, we working on this. Uh, you know, that we needed more housing. There's too many homeless. And you know, this is how long it takes to get through the bureaucracy and create a plan. So this is awesome. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Bravo. Thank you. All right, uh, no further business. We will be adjourning this meeting at 8:59. Uh, good night and thank you all. We really appreciate the service and it was a pleasure. Good night.
Night.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.